Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Delaware County Council. Today is Tuesday, February 25th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. I want Charlie Benson to make some remarks. Would you please do your own call?
Councilmember Gagliotti. Councilmember Lindell. Councilmember Getzel. Vice Mayor Clark. Mayor Kerr.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Almighty God, thank you for this good local example of government of the people, by the people, and for the people. May this, may you bless every person in this room. May this meeting achieve the goals that it's designed to achieve. And thank you for this wonderful city. Thank you for your presence here with us.
Other comments. If you find a general public comment which deals with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council are not on the agenda, anyone wishing to address the city council on matters of the law are being on the agenda until you send down. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit, no more than three minutes. For each speaker, no action will be taken on matters filed on the inside of my comments when referred to staff.
I'm Scott Donaldson. I'm Chair of the Planning Commission here in Delray Oaks. I just have two quick announcements. The first one is that we have a vacancy within the Planning Commission. It's a great opportunity for anyone that wants to become more involved with our community. They're accepting applications until the 16th of March. You can pick one up right here at City Hall. So I encourage anyone that's interested, please put in an application. The second thing is that our last Planning Commission meeting, we reviewed and discussed the sign ordinance, which I know is a big issue for a lot of folks. We got some great feedback, and we're going to have another meeting on the 11th of March, where we'll discuss that sign ordinance again. And I would encourage people to come to provide their thoughts and their feedback. Thank you.
Ken Rutherford, Leo Verde. On that same topic of signs, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to talk about the current efforts by the city to review and revise the current sign ordinance. I encourage you during this effort to make an effort to include in those revisions the enforcement protocol, the punishment, and the remedies sections directly in the sign ordinance, so that citizens can know what's expected of them with respect to placement of signs, but also how they're going to be enforced, and what the penalties will be for noncompliance. So I encourage you to be careful to do that now, and maybe that effort's already underway. I know that I watched the Planning Commission meeting last week, and I appreciate the efforts the Planning Commission is making. I also know that some of the history is that the last major election cycle, there were signs physically taken by law enforcement for those that felt nonin compliance. Several residents at the time apparently felt that was selective, because it was primarily targeted, they felt at least, at the opposition to the incumbent mayor. We don't want those kinds of occurrences in the city. We want transparency, and we want people to feel at least that it's being even-handedly enforced. So I encourage that. I know that in this current election cycle, apparently there's a council member who has signs that are in violation of the ordinance. There's been some indication that that council member feels that the ordinance is not lawful, because it violates his right to free speech and expression. I don't know what efforts have been made in relation to that, whether there's been an appeal or the citation that we've been told was levied against that council member. I don't know whether that council member has hired legal assistants to challenge the legality of that ordinance. But I would ask that that be transparent, that what the city's doing in relation to a sitting council member not being in compliance with the sign ordinance, that should be transparent to the public, as well as what efforts that council member's making to challenge the legality of that ordinance. I just encourage you, so that we can all move forward as citizens and know what's expected of us, how it's going to be enforced, and that we all feel that there's fairness and transparency in this system itself, that we look carefully at this sign issue and move forward with diligence. Thank you.
Melody Chrislock. I am the Director of Public Water Now. I wanted to take a few minutes to educate all of you to what CalAAM's rate case will, how it will impact you in your water. There's been a lot of confusion out there, and CalAAM has been saying things in the media that are not true. So we need to know what's going on here, because it impacts every one of you. Every three years, CalAAM does a general rate case, where they ask for more money from us. For the last 10 years, every year, they have gotten, on average, a 17% increase, although what they ask for is not as much as they get. And this is the tricky part. I've spent weeks now working with the Public Advocates Office, which is the rape-pier advocate part of the CPUC, that is fighting on all of our behalf to try to keep these rates from price gouging us further. So what's going on? Is it CalAAM is saying they want an 18% increase over the next three years? That's only the base rate. They are not including the surcharges in that. So what happens is they get this 18% approved, and then as soon as they do, they can go right back and say, "Well, this advice letter or this surcharge now needs to be approved, because we need this." So this is how this works. In November, there was a 12% increase approved for that $15 million pipeline. I don't know how many of you knew it. I didn't know it, didn't know it, don't know it all. But this is how they do it. So they get the general rate case approved, and then they go around behind everything to the CPUC and say, "Well, we need this, and this, and this." So it ends up being a lot more money. And this time, they are trying to do something which is, according to the Public Advocates Office, really outrageous. They're trying to take things out of the general rate base, like leaks, which they would normally not make any rate of return on, no profit, on volume of water, that kind of thing. So now what they're trying to do is take that out of the rate base and put it into a surcharge account. That surcharge account then can sit there and build up. Right now, they have $199 million in surcharges, in surcharge accounts, just waiting to get our bills, whenever they can get approval for it. So they want more of this, and they want to raise the cap on these surcharge accounts. And the real killer is, they'll take this out of the base rate and then put it into the surcharge account, and they're asking the CPUC to allow them 9.2 rate of return on all these surcharge accounts, $199 million. So everyone really needs to comment to the CPUC on this. You can go to their website and put in a public comment. I will leave some of these charts out there for you to look at. This is the whole Monterey main system, not just Monterey, it's for Delray Oaks as well. It shows the increases. So if we don't want our rates going up, we need to speak up to the CPUC in the next few weeks. Thanks.
Hi, Jim Clark, Delray Oaks, Beaverton. And less because those of us that like the status quo and think things are moving along smoothly and finally never get up, we might have a fear of you thinking that the only point of view are the people that get up here and are actively promoting a certain position or certain way of thing. So in regards to the Planning Commission reviewing the sign stuff, I think that's a great idea. And I know there are already specifications on the books, and I know from the previous election that we did go out to individuals that were not in compliance, and they were given opportunity to fix their signs, and either chose to or didn't. And that's their right, to either choose to follow what was specified, what was laid out for them, or not to, and then suffer the consequences. We're all adults. We, you know, take whatever we make our decisions on, that's the results of our actions. But I think it's very important to also note that I was personally witness to at least a couple of occasions, and one in particular, where a person that was putting up a sign for the incumbent mayor was not only physically, but verbally abused for even putting it up in a compliant location. So there were actions among all of us that were maybe out of proportion to what they should have been, and I think that what the Planning Commission is doing for this next election will probably straighten it all out. But I just wanted to make sure there was a balance of what was actually seen in the next time. Thank you.
Hi there. Can you hear me okay? One sec. "Hailing Trigenza, Rosita Road." First, the good news. I'm relieved to report that the long overdue fire hazard mitigation of dry brush and overgrowth has begun at the airport property line at Rosita Road. I would like to go on the record with this question for each of our Delray Oaks City Council members. What is your official position on the proposed Airport North Road? You plan to abide by the wishes of the residents who elected you. If not, why not? In my opinion, it is our right to know, as the citizens who voted you into office, to represent us. Regarding the proposed North Road, the real reason for the new road is, to quote the airport, "the non-aviation revenue-producing opportunities," unquote. Let me repeat. "The non-aviation revenue-producing opportunities," unquote. We've been on to their ulterior motives from the start. Watch the videotapes of the meetings with the airport and Delray Oaks citizens. You'll see, the road is not necessary except to create private access with private planes and the 1% of the 1% who'd be utilizing the road to get to and from their private hangar. On the record, the airport stated several times the new road would not be open to regular airport travel. Local Delray Oaks firefighters on the record saying the proposed road will not increase response time, and that seaside would be responding as quickly, if not quicker, than a fire truck coming from the north side of the airport. Another urgent airport issue is the small private planes that have been flying low over our homes more and more frequently, and an alarming flight pattern. Recently, one flew straight down Rosita, very low, making a tight turn toward the airport. Seems like they're joyriding literally all over Delray Oaks, and ditto for the flight school planes. They've been flying unchecked, willy-nilly. The airport does nothing to monitor them despite many complaints from residents, and it's a disaster waiting to happen. The planes go unregulated by the airport, including flight paths and noise, takeoffs and landings out of normal times, and these are private planes. The airport policy of voluntary adherence to noise abatement rules has failed miserably. Left to their own devices, it will continue to get worse, not better. For safety reasons alone, this needs to be addressed by our city leaders. Complaints to the airport by the residents have fallen on deaf ears. It's time for our city leaders to step up to the plate and take this matter very seriously. Land use policy in Delray Oaks General Plan L5, and if I'm wrong, correct me, the airport shall not expand its present aviation operation. If expansion is necessary to accommodate projected passenger demand, it should be moved away from populated areas prior to further improvement and capital investments, which has been the policy since 1988. Thank you for your attention.
Wow, that's hard to follow. Hi, my name is Douglas McKenzie. I live at 16 Sausalito. And I was not going to address the council this evening, however, I would like to address what Mr. Clark said, or what he is, I still didn't hear. What Mr. Clark said is all fine and good, however, some of it is not true. To wit, Alice and I did not receive notice for the record, because the sign was taken from the fence in front of the house. That's all I have to say. Because I think the matter of the sign is really more proper than before the Planning Commission of this one.
Hello, Eric Higer, Wind Down. And after listening to those speakers, just wanted to throw a little bit more context in on the signs. Honestly, the issue's not really the signs that are impolite at this point. We're going to fix that. Most people agree, the ordinance needs to be updated, it would need updated. We've looked at, I mean, most of it's a red presence, that it's not in compliance. It's going to be updated. It will be updated, and hopefully sooner than later. At the last meeting, the city manager had informed the informants that the 65-day rule, which I guess a lot of us didn't quite understand, was not tied to an election cycle, it was 65 days period. So the no deal, the no roof, the RO signs need to come down. And so I offered, and the city manager accepted, that I would just lay it on people who had put them up. And I'm happy to say, I believe that they're all down. Took a bottle of weed, took a lot of hard work, it was not a small effort, to contact people all through the city, and in a week, get all the signs down. The one thing I would want to comment on, though, was as we were, you know, we actually do that, as I talked to the people who were taking them down, what they told me, the feedback they got, was, "How come we're taking, the citizens are taking theirs down, when we still have, Gagliotti still has the signs up, and out of compliance for some reason?" Did not really have a great answer for that. We told them we didn't know everything that was going on, or had happened, or might happen. I'd just like to reiterate for all of us to consider, for all of us in public positions, that we all know this, this is preached from day one. It's about the appearance of things. And most of the residents, all they know is what they see. They see their signs coming down, because they were told to take them down, and they see a city council member's seats, signs staying up. So we need to be mindful of that. Appearances do matter. So I would invite everyone, as the invitation's extended by the chairman, to come to the Planning Commission, be a part of the process of, Councilman Gagliotti feels, and I agree with him, that the sign limitation is instilling in his personal right. I think he should have put the signs up. I'd like to see him come and be part of the process, that would not just ignore it, act like it doesn't matter to him, and he can do what he wants, or any of us. We should all be, we should all be mindful of what the rules are, and follow the rules. If we don't like it, just work and change them. Thank you.
Good evening. Obviously, oh, my name is Frederick Jones, who will place. Obviously, there are many concerns regarding the signs. And I'm appreciative that there has been some committee form to make those appropriate changes. And to each one of you on the city council, this may be a petty issue to some of you, including maybe even Mr. Pick and even our police chief. Yet, in 2018, you did view this as a concern to the extent where our police officers were used and instructed to pull up the signs that were violating the ordinance. However, the chief complaint is not the sign ordinance itself. The blatant disregard by a city council member defying a city ordinance and invoking his claim that the ordinance violates his constitutional right, that is the chief complaint. And what appears to be more concerning than anything else is that we appear to have a city manager that, through his silence, is supporting and validating that argument by the city council member. The continued silence is deafening and demonstrates that nothing is being done to bring that council member into compliance, despite taking a oath that he would live a law-abiding life while serving as a city council member or a public elected official. One would wonder how our Delray Oaks residents would react, knowing that their elected official, who took that oath to uphold those city ordinances, yet blatantly defies those very same ordinances he swore to uphold with a so what outlook. My question, Mr. Pick, is this. Based on Mr. Gagliotti's argument, the city ordinance that he's disputing, that is a constitution, a violation of his constitution, is that true? If not, my question to Mr. Pick and other city council members are, what other blatant and defiance of ordinance law and laws will Mr. Gagliotti be allowed to violate while members of this council support that defiance by not addressing the violation by holding him accountable with appropriate consequences and not let him go on believing and demonstrating that he is above the law? Because appearances is everything. And when you, in 2018, held us all accountable, and action was taken, we, the residents of Delray Oaks, believe that that goes to the city council members that we've elected as well. At the February Planning Commission meeting, you stated Mr. Gagliotti had been cited. Since that date, Mr. Pick, please tell us, what, if any, other actions has the city taken to ensure compliance? Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right. Public comment closed. Number one to number five. Presentation, Pure Water, Monterey, 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 Monterey. For Mr. Paul Schudo. He's here.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I didn't mean to make the title so difficult, so I apologize for that. Just want to take this, my name's Paul Schudo. I'm the general manager of Monterey Water. And I want to take this opportunity just to give a brief update on the Pure Water Monterey Project, as most, very recently, and this is what we're going to go over, it has been producing purified water, transferring it to Seaside Basin, and injecting it into the ground for all of us to use in the near future. So... I'm done now? Thank you for your time. So just a little bit about the Pure Water Monterey Project. Never mind, I'll just go with... The Pure Water Monterey Project is what's called a potable reuse project. We're recycling wastewater, we're putting it through a four-stage advanced treatment process. It basically creates highly purified water that we are then pumping into the Seaside Groundwater Basin and injecting. At that point, CalA American can extract the water from the basin and distribute it to all of us. This has been in the works for, coming up on seven years now. It takes a long time to get a project of this magnitude going, from environmental work, design, permitting, and so on. This is basically, I think Dino put it, well, sort of a victory lap. This is the treatment plant itself. Those of you that have been out to the landfill off Charlie Benson Road, our facilities are adjacent to the landfill. In the background, you see our primary and secondary wastewater treatment plant that has been there for many years. In the foreground is the advanced water purification facility. That takes a portion of the water that comes to our treatment plant and purifies it. It is highly regulated, as one can imagine, so I want to make sure that we address that. We've been working with a number of consultants, independent advisory panels, state regulators, federal agencies, and so on, to get this project to the finish line. The most recent large milestone is on February 4th, the Division of Drinking Water, which is under the State Water Resources Control Board, came down for their final inspection. They brought about 10 people, from, one from San Diego, two from Los Angeles, three from Sacramento, and then some of the local staff, and basically put us and our treatment plant through the paces, making sure it did what we said it was going to do, what it was designed to do. If there are any issues with the treatment plant, that it immediately shuts down and goes into a recirculating mode. Much of the inspection was, we started off here in a conference room to discuss what was going on, answered general questions. The Division of Drinking Water staff went on a detailed tour of the treatment plant, treatment facilities itself, and then lastly, went up into our control room, which is not intended to watch football, although that would be a great use of this facility with all those screens. There's approximately, what you don't see here, there's approximately 20 screens up there. There are operators, 24/7, 365 are operating our treatment plant, the outlining facilities, about 36 pump stations, and now this advanced water purification facility and injection facility. So what you see there is, frankly, I guess, three of the Division of Drinking Water people. Everything is controlled through those screens that have control center, and they're frankly shutting things down as they're looking out there. They're going, "Okay, what happens if an RO membrane has a leak?" And they wanted to prove that things would shut down. "What happens if you have a low tank level over here?" What happens? So they were with us from 9:00 AM till about 5:30 PM doing this task. At the end of that day, February 4th, we received a verbal that we were good to go. So we had state approval to start that project. We received written on, I'm sorry, February 5th, which is Wednesday, and on the 6th, we started pumping water. This is just a brief, you probably saw this picture actually in the newspapers, on the Herald. These are RO membranes, reverse osmosis membranes, same sort of thing they're going to use on a D cell plant, or do use on D cell plants. These are two of our operators that, frankly, they did a great job. It's Jaren and Neil. They did a great job in starting this thing up and have been keeping it running, frankly, since the beginning of December. As I mentioned, on the 6th, we started pumping water through the transmission pipeline, which is owned and constructed by Marina Coast Water District. We have contributed funds, so we own about 72% of the capacity on that Marina Coast Pipeline. Water is transferred to Seaside, and what you see here on the left-hand side is shallow injection wells. And I'll talk about that in a second. On the right-hand side is percolation pond. These are two of the three ways we get that purified water into the Seaside Groundwater Basin. The third way, which we don't have a picture of, is deep injection well. So it moves down a couple hundred feet into Santa Margarita, I prefer. Those are being commissioned this week. As we, well, actually, as of yesterday, there were seven contractors and consultants on site putting those deep injection wells through its paces, and we're going to be online with those by Thursday or Friday. So at that point in time, between the percolant, shallow injection, and those deep injection wells, we'll be able to run this in full bore, which is around four or five million gallons a day of purified water coming to this area. So I know that was a very quick overview of what we've done, what we've accomplished, but we wanted to get in front of you and say, "Hey, water's being produced. First new source of water for the peninsula and many, many moons." And it's just a testament to not only Monterey One Water, but all our partners. We have nine agreements with other public entities. We've worked with the Monterey County Water Resources Agency, City of Salinas, obviously Marina Coast Water District, all the cities. I know I'm missing a few, and I'll probably get called out for it, so I apologize for that. But it's been a very successful journey. So with that, any questions you may have?
Dennis Ollion, with the Spirit High, he was a classiest student, such an excellent student.
Thank you. Dennis was absolutely a huge proponent of this, and yeah, you're absolutely right.
Next presentation. Are you still reading tutors and papers on?
Yes, we are.
I took one of the tutors, and it was very informative, very well done. Now you've got to taste the water, for sure.
Thank you. So actually, that's a great point. I appreciate you bringing it up. We do have a demonstration facility. You can come out to our plant site, we can give you a brief presentation on what this is all about. Walk out to the demo facility, and it's probably a room, maybe a little bigger than this room. I don't know if you think that. Has all the treatment processes on a smaller scale, so you can actually get a better feel for what is happening. so you can actually get a better feel for what is happening to the water to make it so pure. And you're absolutely right, you can taste it if you'd like.
I'd like, if we could, applause. If you could just save the date, the first day we put the water in the ground, so we can all applaud.
Yes. I did.
That's an applause point, right?
I might have had a glass of wine that day.
I think it's definitely worth it.
So let's go out for a public comment. Do you want to have any questions or comments to share?
When does Cal Am begin drawing the water? And I have a good question.
Okay. So although that's a very simple question, I'm going to give a really convoluted answer. And I apologize.
What was the question?
Oh, I'm sorry. The question is, when can Cal Am start extracting the water to supply it to all of us? And there are some provisions in the water purchase agreement that we have with the Water Management District and Cal Am that we need to put a thousand acre feet in the ground first. That's an operational reserve. So we anticipate that being in the ground, plus or minus May-June timeframe. So at that point, Cal Am could extract the water and start delivering it. I know it's daytime, May-June, but right around that.
My other question is, I had heard that when water is extracted from an aquifer, that the cavity shrinks? How do you put water back in if it's found? Is that, maybe that's not even true?
So you may be referring to, there's certain areas like in Central Valley that's also a bit of a reminder for now, where, you know, the hundreds of years of extraction have actually been sinking subsidence in that land. So that can occur. However, and I think, we're, Gagliotti's on the Seaside Groundwater Master, that basin has a significant storage capacity still. It has not been overdrafted. And I believe it's slightly overdrafted, but not to the significance of certain areas of the Central Valley, or frankly, even Salinas. So there is storage capacity within that groundwater basin, which we have in agreement with the Seaside Groundwater Master, a storage community for the Pure Water Project.
Mr. Spito, can you explain how this project benefits or impacts the Monterey Bay National Sanctuary?
Absolutely. So obviously, I'm a little biased. I think this is such a good project on so many levels. Not only is it producing thirty-five hundred acre feet of potable water, if we can work some things out with the Monterey County Water Resources Agency, it's going to produce an additional four thousand acre feet of agricultural irrigation water in addition to what we've been doing for the last twenty-two years. And we'll get to that question. There's environmental benefits as well to this renewable project. One is, if we can reuse more of our wastewater, there's less that is discharged through our outfall into the National Sanctuary. So the water that we treat meets, it's Title 22 compliant for state regulation. It meets all ocean plan requirements, but frankly, the less effort we put out into the ocean, in my opinion, it's a better thing for the environment. Another, see, now you got me going. I'm so sorry. Some of the water that we're taking into the plant to make this project a reality is from drainage dishes in the Salinas Valley. The Reclamation Dish and Blanco Drain. Those two dishes, the water in there have been, are impaired waterways by the state of California. So in accepting that water, we're taking a pollutant load out of the environment, treating it, and then putting one in the ground. That water and that entire pollutant load would take the Salinas River and go onto the National Sanctuary. One last environmental benefit is we have negotiated a thirty-year power purchase agreement with the Monterey Regional Waste Management District for landfill gas renewable energy. So when that portion is constructed, which will be about a year from now, we'll be powering this recycled water plant with a hundred percent renewable energy from the landfill. So thanks for opening that up.
Let's move into the next.
So currently, and currently, our treated effluents, all of us take showers, dishwashers, et cetera, comes to our treatment plant. We clean the water through that plant that you saw in the background. That is considered secondary effluent, which is then discharged to the National Sanctuary. We're going to take a portion of that for this plant. And obviously, during the summertime, not much goes out at all because it does go for agricultural irrigation in the Salinas Valley. There is a portion of this RO concentrate. So you can imagine, reverse osmosis is just a filter. It clogs up, you got to backwash it, and you have what's known as RO concentrate. Once again, whether it's here or at Carl's Bass D cell plant, this is just how it works. That concentrate will be discharged through our outfall into the sanctuary as well. Now, people say, well, that's not good, you put some pollutants up there. And we are. However, we have worked with the state that all those discharges meet the California Clean Line, which, as we all know, is probably most restrictive in the country, if not the world.
Hi. I was just wondering if you could speak to the expansion, hence why it might not become a backup one?
Yeah, so I did not bring my tattoos tonight. So the expansion, so Pure Water Monterey Expansion, for just some definition, is, back in 2017, the CPUC asked us through a motion, hey, can you expand your Pure Water project? And if so, to what? And that was truly the impetus to start looking at expansion. Through that process with the CPUC, we identified three potential options of expansion. The most economically viable was what you referred to as Pure Water Monterey Expansion. And it's an additional two thousand two hundred fifty acre feet. Our board, the Monterey One Board, last March, if I'm not mistaken, approved a contract to move forward with environmental impact report, some permitting, and some pre-design. We are working through that as we speak. It is considered a backup to, a backup project for the Cal Am's D cell plant. So the way it was structured in the board agenda item as well as discussion was if the D cell plant was delayed or for some reason wouldn't move forward, this expansion, this twenty-two fifty-eight feet, would be in a position to keep going. So hence the reason. We are finishing up our supplemental EIR. We have pre-designed, and everything at about thirty percent. And we started working on hydraulic line permitting. I completely did not answer your question, but that is sort of the status of where we're at. It's truly not up to our board to say we're going or we're not going. As you may know, the CPUC regulates and governs Cal Am. So the CPUC would have to say, hey, Cal Am, go sign another water purchase agreement and without additional water. Of course, the CPUC directed Cal Am to construct the six-point-four million gallon per day D cell plant, and that's where things are going. Oh, one thing on my schedule. Our supplemental EIR public comment period closed January 31st, 2020. And we're anticipating bringing it to our board of directors for certification April 27th, 2020. So in about two months. Did that sort of answer your question?
I have a follow-up question for that. Since, yes, we understand that the CPUC would have to tell Cal Am that they need to sign a water purchase agreement. However, a lot of the public's concern has been around a majority of Monterey One Water's board members do not receive water from Pure Water Monterey. And they have a tendency to oppose this project, as well as Mr. Gagliotti. And they don't want the expansion. They've already tried to block it. So my question is, when the SEIR is ready to be certified, what grounds would they have to block certification or approval in order to try to force the D cell on the peninsula as opposed to the expansion?
Thank you for the nice softball question. So what grounds would our board? So absolutely, our board is comprised of ten member entities. And of the ten, there's a number that are in the valley that do not get Cal Am water, including obviously, City of Salinas, the largest of the area, County of Monterey, Casterville, Verandas Anity District. Thank you, and Marina Coast Water District. So in terms of the grounds to certify or not certify the SEIR, so we all know that a supplemental environmental impact report is to look at environmental impacts of a given project. Based on the comments we received on the project, these are round numbers, so please don't quote me. It's a, we had about fifty-three comments. Of the fifty-three comments, twenty-two were just letters saying, please extend comment period. So, you know, that's not necessarily pertinent from a certification standpoint. Another ten letters were about the quality of the product water. So not having to do with this supplemental EIR, but more of the Division of Drinking Water work. About twelve waters, twelve letters, excuse me, had to do with source waters. So once again, not an environmental impact, more of a project feasibility, which leaves about eight to ten letters that actually have some substantial comments that our environmental team and their consultants need to respond to within that SEIR. Based on, I get briefings every couple of weeks from our consulting team, see where they're at, are we moving ahead, what are the stumbling blocks? And our call today, there didn't appear to be any environmental issues that could not be responded to in an accurate manner. So when we bring this to the board on April 27th, the environmental comments will be, in my opinion, will be addressed sufficiently to certify the EIR. Now, once again, that's two questions, and we won't have to have answers specifically. But I hope that sort of gets to the, from an environmental perspective, I think we're going to do a great job in producing a document. We have some of the best consultants around. And this is a supplemental EIR to our original EIR that was certified in October of 2015. So it's just an hour, if you will. Is that what we're getting to?
Any other public comments, questions? And two. And one is, can you tell me, is the source water for the expansion secure?
So, once again, easy question, complex answer, and I apologize. We certainly feel it is. Now, talking specifically about the expansion, so not that thing, but the expansion, the source waters for the expansion are, well, fourfold. Excess wastewater that's going out to the, through our outfall in the wintertime, when agriculture isn't irrigated. Some additional waters from the Blanco Drain and the Reclamation Dish. Once again, water that is just going to the Salinas River and out to the ocean. We have some contractually obligated water that we have rights to, that we just haven't utilized in the last fifteen years. We intend to utilize that. So those three, at least in my mind, and in my discussions with the Water Resources Agency, are secure. And I think we have a meeting of the minds on that. I met with the general manager of the Monterey County Water Resources Agency yesterday. We discussed this. The one that we have a bit of a discrepancy on is, this is where it gets confusing, some backwash water of filters for the tertiary plant. And that discrepancy is about a thousand acre feet per year. So you pass that over a twelve-month period. We have a misunderstanding. And our plan moving forward to make that secure is, number one, get all our staff in the room to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of the numbers. And then number two, pick a third-party water rights attorney to produce legal opinion that we can both agree to and take to our respective boards. We, unbeknownst to me, we did get a legal opinion on this already. I said, yeah, the water is, should be shared equally by Water Resources Agency and Monterey One Water. But of course, that's our attorneys, and I want to respect the Water Resources Agency and have a neutral third party. The reason this may get more confusing than I've already made it is in the supplemental EIR, being that it builds on the EIR from 2015, you won't see that backwash water in the EIR if you look at that. The way the supplemental looks at it is the totality of the water that was considered back in 2015, being the build on this environmental document. So the environmental look at it is different than the potential reality of the world. So to answer your question furiously, we feel three of the four are dead solid, and there's discrepancy on about five hundred acre feet a year. And we're going to work through that in the next couple of months.
And my last question is, the water supply is groundproof?
So...
And one.
So we certainly think the recycled water is groundproof. And here's, if you look at the sources that are coming in, so excess wastewater that's going out to the ocean. Well, we're all going to take showers. We went through a historic four-year drought. And yeah, our flows and treatment plant dropped off a little bit. But it didn't drop off during those four years. It actually dropped off previous years when conservation came into effect. So when there's severe droughts, generally speaking, and I'm not, I mean, this is certainly a general overarching comment, you still take showers, you still brush your teeth, you still wash your clothes. Maybe you don't water outside as much. Well, all that outside water, it doesn't come to us. It just goes into the ground, right? Second source, the Blanco Drain and Rec Dish. Those, that's agricultural irrigation runoff. Well, even during the severe drought, the four-year drought, which some say was five or six years, those dishes were still flowing because that's high-value agricultural land that is going to be irrigated, whether it be with recycled water or the groundwater pumping supplements it. So that's a secure source from a drought. The contractually obligated water is actually the wastewater we just talked about. It's just splitting of how we use it. And then lastly, the backwash water that we're still going to go talk about, that's water that is used for agricultural irrigation. Recycled water used for agricultural irrigation, which is probably one of the more secure sources for our neighbors in the valley. And for twenty-two years, we have twenty-two years of data that drought, no drought, we produce recycled water. So as I sit here, I certainly feel as though it is a drought-proof source. I've heard the comments as well. You use agricultural washwater, you know, the ag washing. Those people are going away, the companies are moving to Yuma. Well, in this analysis, we didn't include agricultural washwater in that source water analysis. So I don't think that is a threat to the overall expansion feasibility.
All right. Thank you so much for taking the time and starting here to ruin this.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the time. And I invite any and all to come for a tour of our demonstration facility.
Do they have the following particular day?
Just contact us, and we can set it up.
They're on the gate.
We do, okay, yes. All right, thank you.
So the next stop is Propagation for Black History Month. So there will be this moment, and I'm going to do this. Honoring Black History on February 20th. Whereas the City of Delray Oaks is committed to diversity, equity, inclusion, and mutual respect as a fundamental aspect in a healthy, thriving community. And whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of African-American history throughout our American experience and serves to promote cultural enrichment, ethnic pride, and self-esteem. And whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans. made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development, and whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the stories and teachings of those who built our nation, took a stance against prejudice to build lives of dignity and opportunity, advanced the cause of civil rights, and strengthened families and communities. And whereas Black community has been a target of discrimination and violence based on identity and conflicts with our core values as a community, and whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our nation's attention to the continued need to battle racism, and looked at the future to continue to improve society so that we live up to the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore, I, Mayor Als, encourage you hereby proclaim February twenty twenty as Black History Month. I urge all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all in witness here where of I have here to set my hand this twentieth day of February twenty twenty. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to staff reports. Your manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The Habitat Working Group, Habitat Working Group consisting of the four board, the administrative committee, has met on nearly a weekly basis for the past month to determine the way ahead regarding Habitat management of the former Fort Worth properties. The group received a presentation about the potential cost of jurisdictions should they use a Habitat management plan, which is currently in effect, rather than the Habitat Conservation Plan or HCP, which has been in the works for many, many years. Staff believe that the vast set of assumptions used in this type of modeling have not been vetted with regulatory agencies at the state and federal level. Their accuracy is questionable at best. It appears clear that any substantive work on HCP, HMP will take longer than FORA has left and is mandated. So interim JPA appears to be the best way to continue that work. The group has also reviewed a memo produced by outside counsel concerning potential litigation threats based on various scenarios to potentially certify the HCP's environmental document or EIR and prove the HCP as a project. The most viable course of action appears at this point to be having the four board certify the EIR, then leave the approval of the project in whatever form it may ultimately take to the interim JPA. The group reviewed a draft interim JPA agreement prepared by four staff. There was broad agreement, permittees, legal counsel should review the agreement, the language should be added concerning escrow account and disposition of the seventeen million dollars currently in an endowment fund for Habitat management. The goal is for the four board to consider the agreement in March, and our city council will consider the agreement in either March or April, depending on when it's ready. The next meeting of the Habitat Working Group will focus on the cost of a phased HCP. The permittees agreed to develop a interim JPA for consideration by the councils that would limit the authority to receiving and holding funds in escrow account, developing the way forward. This way forward could entail a reduced scope or phased HCP, or some other mechanism as determined by that interim JPA. Sorry, that's a lot of acronyms. It's a quick update on a very complex subject. Uh, sorry, I still need to go here. The four admin committee met last week, last Wednesday, to discuss the agreements with FORA and Seaside, to nominate Seaside as the successor agency to FORA for the purposes of transfer of land, which is a really vital capability that FORA has that, once it sunsets, goes back to the federal government. And the four board has this, which is terrific. Were it not for that action, and these are a series of very critical actions that are coming due in a very short period of time as June thirtieth approaches, were that action not to have been taken, land not yet transferred, which includes some right-of-way actually that we have under some of our roads, would have gone to control of the General Services Administration, or GSA, in the federal government, well away from this region, and remarkably difficult to exercise any, any transfer. So that was a big win by the board, and I'm sorry, I'm sort of running away with that. Staff met several times with four staff concerning the Southbound Road project. We are working to establish an escrow count into which the funds that have been allocated for the Southbound Road construction project would be deposited in terms for their expenditure agreed to, that would allow the city then to have access to those funds after June thirtieth, specifically for the purposes determined in the, in the agreement for that escrow, which would include design and construction of the Southbound Road project. We're also working with, with four staff to transfer the engineering contract, which is with Witsen Engineers, that currently FORA is overseeing for the design phases, the permit phases of Southbound Road. We're, we're working with them to transfer that contract to the city. When that's ready, four board will take action to transfer it, and then the city council will consider receipt of the contract, which would bring control over that construction contract to, to the city, as well as the funds in the escrow. So a couple of moving parts that will allow the continued progress on, on Southbound Road. Staff spoke with McKellner, Down, and Morelli development teams about the way ahead for our Fort Worth property. Staff finalizing a letter to both outlining a structured due diligence period of sixty days, during which we'll continue to provide documentation on the property and answer questions from the development teams, with the goal of developing exclusive negotiating agreements with both development teams that we can then bring back to the city council and, and compare contrast to give the city council the best option for, for a development team moving forward. At the end of that process, when we get under that agreement, that will be the start of a set of milestones that will include the public outreach that everyone, including myself, is so, so looking forward to, to start to determine what the project out there might look like with regard to housing, parks, commercial, light industrial, Fortag, and so on. Public Works repaired some vandalism damage to our volleyball net in the park, removed some dead fall from our walkway easements. Last week saw the return of the Seaside Pony League to our ball field after a long drought there, periodically and literally. A very welcome site. Public Works installed a new trinket fountain with a bottle filling station near Old Town Mall between the two bathrooms there in our park. Ron also removed the lion's head, it's coming back, it's coming back. It's just getting refurbished, and the plumbing underneath it is being repaired so that it can be used as a, as a fountain. And in addition to all of that, Ron continues to plant some beautiful new flowers in our monument signs, working landscaping around the city, and just be some amazing workforce as a one-man show. The planning commission has been, as has been fairly exhaustively referenced tonight, met to consider the sign ordinance. Chair Donaldson did excellent preparatory work, had a great discussion with public input and commissioner views on, on the way ahead. We've also received input from, from Ken and other residents as to some terrific ideas about specific language relating to the code enforcement ordinance and linking that to, to the sign ordinance specifically, relating to, to the city's way in terms of the current violations that may exist throughout the city. As I stated during the planning commission, and as I stated, residents and the mayor and other council members have asked about this, the city continues to apply the code in a fair and equitable fashion through our law enforcement chief, chief of police, and we will continue to do so. Staff met with Monterey Regional Waste Management District representatives from Greenways and representatives from Greenways. The long underway cost-based readjustment has been completed, and the terrific news for our rate payers, residential and commercial, is that there will be no rate hike this year. No rate increase to your, to your, uh, hey, to your garbage this year. Rates will adjust again on July first, and we don't have the specifics of the projected increase yet, but we expect to have those in, in the coming months. Area city managers met to discuss a response to the revised growth forecast and water demand document from the Water Management District. It's clear that this review will require an expertise not resident in any of our city staffs, and we sent as much in a letter to, to Mr. Stoll, and he's, he is, communication's been terrific with him and the area managers. What we seek is a third-party review of the numbers that he has in that very important document, because that document has started to shape a narrative that will impact our city and other cities' abilities to, to control land use and, and develop in the future. And so we want a, an outside party to take a look at those numbers, do a solid analysis, and provide that feedback. Also asked him to provide that document to CPUC, State Water Board, and Seaside Water Master, and he has agreed to do all of the above. I attended the lead cities, city managers department conference several weeks ago. There were many productive discussions there regarding homelessness. There continues to be a tremendous push from the state level concerning housing stock. HCP was there and briefed all managers on the set of sticks and carrots that the, that the state is deploying to try to promote the increase in, in housing stock. And we, we continue to be well-positioned with our recently updated housing element, and we will continue to pursue grant opportunities, one of which is sixty thousand dollars available to the city through, through one program, and an unspecified amount that we're gonna pursue through a regional program. Those are all in the carrot side of incentivizing planning documents, rezoning, ADUs, and so on, and so we'll keep pressing on with all of that. The AMBI Planning Directors Forum was held several weeks ago. AMBI provided guidance to cities concerning the state grant programs, and they will be managing the application, facilitating the application process, so we're, we're very appreciative to work with them. Our regional risk management pool held its annual planning session. A topic of discussion for all the cities was cyber attack. A lot of cities are being attacked, their data's frozen, and held hostage, and it's costing a lot of money, as well as incredible disruptions and services to, to cities. So we have, we've increased our cybersecurity insurance levels to, to better protect our city, given the, the changing landscape with regard to cyber threat. Chief and I attended a city manager police chief conference at San Luis Obispo. A lot of issues were discussed, tensions that exist between city management and, and police departments, and I know we both came away from that really appreciative that we have not only the relationship that we have here, but just the, the strong agile ability to, to adapt. We have a solid council, we have a great public, we have a great department, and so it was a, it was good, good outing for us. Staff attended the Monterey Regional Parks District workshop on Fortag and spoke during public comment on behalf of Fortag, particularly through the BroadCon, very sensitive component of, of this really terrific project for our city. Council will hold a strategic planning session on Tuesday, March, or that is super Tuesday, yes, from eight-thirty to three here in City Hall, or to have a staff participate in that. The next coffee with city manager is March tenth, six P M, here at City Hall. Please come and share your thoughts with, with myself and city staff. And finally, we are starting to pull together the spring edition of the Acorn, so look for that in May.
Yeah. So Paul ran in here before, before I had something that I wanted to bring up on this here, but, um, so, so we had a meeting last night, we approved a one-point-sixty-nine-dollar annual chemical purchase cost, which is a regular cost, we approved it last year, fifty and a half percent increase, which is actually good news, because generally it's a seven to ten percent increase in standard. We approved five-hundred thousand dollars for SCI immigration services that were associated to commissioning of, of the Pure Water Monterey project. This is, it's coming late because the entire project was late, and you couldn't actually do a lot of SCI immigration until the plant was actually ever operating, so that's why this is coming now, and we can actually approve that. We approved another four-hundred thousand dollars to replace it on the primary grinder. But the, the real kind of meat, and I would say the more difficult, last night's meeting actually was a really good meeting because we, we saw the same presentation last night that we just saw here, and so her was kind of very happy about that. However, there is one point, Monterey One has two functions, it's, well, it's always been primarily one function, and now we are two functions, we produce water, but for the twenty-five years of its existence, it's always been sewer. And, and as such, for the last, for an aggregate of about twenty-one years, we've not actually had irradiation of any substance. And, and as such, they, we are about seventy percent, about seventy percent of our long-lived capital assets are fully depreciated, for instance, to say that only thirty percent of our plant is really healthy, or maybe about seventy percent of the plant is beyond useful life. And when you're talking sewers, and sewage, that's, that's kind of a dangerous, dangerous kind of situation to be in. So, we are, last night, staff brought to us a number of options that were vetted through the, the budget and process committee. The, the unanimous decision by the board of the options for staff to explore is, in the next year, to propose a seventy percent increase in fees, or in our sewer, sewage fees, in the first year, and then three percent increases for the subsequent four years after that. And what this will do is that this will, this will close that delta, and will get us closer to basically a, a more healthier kind of the operating, operating stance, and, and get us back to, closer to a fifty percent appreciated capital asset. The issue, the biggest issue with kind of infrastructure, especially this kind of infrastructure, is that the, the spends, the capital investment spends needed are not, are not a straight line. It's not, you don't just spend too many dollars every year and kind of keep your, your plant operating, it's that the, the spends and the investments can get very chunky. They could be, at any moment, we could have a ten to thirty million dollar need overnight if a major part of the plant was down. And so to prevent that, mitigate that, we can make those investments over, so we're two-hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars in reinsurance right now that we need to make up. So this will actually come to, it's part of a, a large, a larger public outreach that the Monterey One staff will be making for the next kind of six months, but just kind of give you a heads up, that's, that's coming. Seaside Water Master, the, we approved the contract with the staff, we approved the comment letter to Monterey One's supplemental EIR, we elected Paul Bruno as chairman, and I was elected treasurer. Fort Worth, or FORA, you know, actually, you did a great, great update on, on things. There are a couple of things, though, of what the executive committee was prioritized as board action, and our first order of business was to generate a calendar for a few approved special meetings, and anticipated several necessary votes regarding HCP, like bonding, ESCA, and the transition. You know, touched on the resolution, two-hundred thousand dollars we approved for DPA, and the staffing up for the successor DPA. I wanted to go into some, some background facts on kind of what the HCP working group is wrestling with. So the former Fort Worth is, is about twenty-eight thousand acres, and twenty-two thousand acres of it is in some form, or it's open space or committed to habitat protection, and which remains is about six thousand acres that is roughly divided amongst education, so CSUMB, Maury Institute, or Maury Institute College, and Maury College of Law, two other institutions, which leaves about three thousand acres of what's called developed or, or redeveloped lands. And, and so these lands, it's those lands that actually generate all the revenue for the management of the, the balance of the twenty-two thousand acres. Actually, it's the twenty-two thousand acres plus any of the environmental impacts that the predeveloped lands are. And it's really only a third of those, of those lands. So if you inverted this, for every acre of predeveloped lands out of Fort Worth, six is set aside for some form- six is set aside for some form of habitat conservation or habitat protection or permanent open space. And those lands, and those lands need to be managed. And the way that the Army, actually 20-some-one years ago, 25 years ago, the Army, Fish and Wildlife Service, the PIA, and the state, all basically got together and said, "So how are you going to do this? How are you going to convey these lands to these jurisdictions?" And they came up with, in short term, an HMP, which is the Habitat Management Plan. And that is just baseline, that's just your base. Those are the metrics of the land that, or they are an expected environmental condition that the land must meet ultimately, once it's transferred, or after it's been transferred to the jurisdiction, the jurisdiction that becomes responsible to bring it up to that point. And the metrics and the measurements that were put into that Habitat Management Plan were based on, or the assumptions were based on that eventually a Habitat Conservation Plan would be enacted. And when you put lands generally, and usually the way this works, when you put lands into some sort of conservation or protection, you come up with not just an HMP or just an HCP, you come up with a Habitat Management Conservation Plan, HMCP. And that's where the Army, the regulatory bodies, and the state were all basically coming from. What we're dealing with at the HCP working group is we have jurisdictions that feel it's one or the other. And they don't understand that it's actually no, HMP is the baseline. Those are the metrics and the measurements of where the land has to come to. And the HCP are the actions that are taken to raise or to get that land to the measures that are then carried on in monitoring. And this is expensive stuff, it's 22,000 acres. That, and which is actually good for environmental reasons, is that species likes huge, large contiguous swaths, has to do with regulatory agencies. Again, and one of the issues that we're dealing with in the HCP working group is that we have jurisdictions that want to just kind of put a, you know, put a boundary around their properties and say, "What can I do, what's the minimum I can basically do to continue to go forward?" And they do this in a vacuum because the, the agencies look at that, they actually come up. The states look, sat in front of our, sat from our board, and when we had one of the jurisdictions saying, "Look, I just want to basically, I'm only responsible for this. This is my impact, and this is what I want to pay for." The states, well, all of these assumptions were based on a large, huge contiguous swath. If you, if we're going to be doing a smaller postage stamp, all the impacts, all the mitigation ratios are all going to go up, and none of that consultation is happening. And so we are kind of in a bind when a jurisdiction is saying, "Well, show me, an HMP is cheaper than an HCP." It's, that's not the right question. It's, in aggregate, if we all, if we all run together and we have 22,000 acres that we all agree to is protection and the benefit for the species we can benefit, then what is our cost to go forward? And if we're going to have any other, I guess, variant of that, if we're all jurisdictions are going to kind of retreat back into our own boundaries and say, "We're only going to do..." Then we have to basically reopen, or each jurisdiction then has to go before the agencies individually and say, "What are my impacts?" And that's, I mean, that's, it took 22 years to get to where we're at right now. So that's where we're at. And the JPA is hopefully going to be kind of how we're going to be able to do that. Is that, this should have actually been kind of solved and figured out years ago, you know, with FORA. Now, I want to say this about FORA, that we are at that six to one kind of development and mitigation ratio, or development and habitat ratio, is a huge testament actually to FORA, because those lands out there are ocean-y property. I mean, if this were, if we were anywhere else in the world, that would be completely overbuilt. You just drag down the Moffin Coast or Cote d'Azur, that looks exactly, you know, like our coast, and just see, you know, how the development or the built environment is. So I think that that's a huge testament to Michael Houlemar and to Sam Farr, and to some regard, Leon Neta, that they put that in place and that that's there. So, you stole so much, I don't know about that. Anyway, then the last thing was the light bonds. And that was, we are currently in a holding pattern until the Superior Court can make a judgment of whether FORA has the ability to, or the authority to actually sell bonds before it actually goes into, or goes away. And we'll know, I guess, two weeks or so.
Good evening. I attended the Monterey County United Nations Council meeting at the end of January. They reported that they have started construction on Phase Two of the Central Coast that we sent there, which will enable ground barrels. There are a number of preferences, religious or personal, that have prevented veterans being buried here since we only had home area. So they're hoping that the first burial is going to take about a year to 15 months. I also attended the Fortor Area Retirement Council, or as it's known, called the Retired Soldiers Council, although we do have representatives of all services, including the Coast Guard on it. We have a very good update on the Palo Alto Healthcare System Business Office Mission Act, which is an act that was passed by Congress about nine months ago, which greatly enables and simplifies the abilities of veterans who use local healthcare, or primarily emergency room and emergency care. So, you know, you get that call on a weekend, you can go to Doc in the Box, and there's certain things you have to do within 72 hours. Some have a shorter thing, but it does simplify it for veterans to get healthcare, especially since we don't have a full-service hospital here, and obviously as a clinic, we only have ours. And they're very busy and very popular, I know, because I mean, it's not just mine, mine and others'. So, because I have a very popular back. So those are the dramatics from that. I attended the Northern Springs Valley's Build Amendment District Meeting. We had a presentation on their annual audit, which was very successful. I also learned a lot of audits. We had a presentation on, from an entity I can't state, it's a government entity or a nonprofit, that does loans for government entities. And they're like a, like their mortgage broker, who buy their house, they live there, except that they look for, for agencies and cities. We just got information because a lot of buildings, a building, a bunker works, and there are options on how to finance that. And on that note, there are very far ahead, that's like, you know, in about four seasons. We also got an update on their drone, I've talked about that before. They started creating drones, and it's been very successful with that. I attended the AMBI meeting, got a very good briefing by Energy Watch, and they talked with something I never heard of, but municipalities can borrow up to $4 million in something called on-bill financing, in 2020. And basically, they are for projects that are for energy use reduction. And the project must deliver a 10-year simple payback, the energy savings, and basically repayments are made each month, amputations you need to go, basically calculated to show the energy savings are going to fail. Unfortunately, it's for energy savings and not for regeneration, so we cannot use the solar panels. I asked you. We also got a draft, preliminary draft, for the 2022 regional growth forecast. And it was very interesting, because the regional growth forecast, they took it all the way back to 1990, and they showed what they had estimated in 1990 would grow the population and job growth primarily. So population, job growth, and housing all are in the link. And what's interesting is that the population growth hasn't been as great, nor has been expected to be as great as it was projected in the last update. However, the housing needs have not significantly changed because we're getting older, and we're healthier, and we're living in our own homes longer. And so they see a need for the same amount of homes, although on smaller size homes. So that was very interesting.
And, thank you. Thank you. The bad bug that's been going through the community found me. And so I missed the last city council meeting because of that. And I also missed the seaside sanitation meeting because of bad health. And the Community Human Services meeting was canceled. So I didn't look very hard at the shrink of this month, but you're not hungry. Since I missed last city council meeting, one of the things I wanted to bring up, and it's a little late to run a forerunner now, but I think is very important. And I wanted to talk about Santa's workshop this December. It was nice that the attendees were at in waves, so there was never a gigantic line for the children to wait to see Santa and sit on his lap and tell them all the wonderful things that they were hiding. And it was nice to see Delaware York's officials attending. Those were Scott Donaldson, who's chairman of the PINE Commission, and Gary Creager, on the PINE Commission, and of course, our city manager, Jim O'Leary, who always shows up. The day before the event was spent decorating Old Town Hall. We didn't have as many volunteers this year as we normally do, I don't know why. Scott Donaldson, who's always generous with his time, and Gary Creager was there. Sandy Shelby and Terri Neese were there early, had, then those who were decorating. And of course, David Markham. Terri Neese and Sandy Shelby are our two greatest organizers and workers for both Santa's workshop and for the summer picnic. I don't know what we'd do without them.
Sure. Thank you. I attended MST when we approved the creation of MSD's safety plan in support of the Federal Transit Safety Commission, which offered by agencies, simply done by July of 2020. By doing, by approving this, MSD has continued access to $10 million in federal grants. And that's all to continually improve transit safety. We received an update on the South County Operations and Maintenance Facility in the city. As you all already know, we're expanding to the South County, and it's important to have buses down there rather than keeping them all up here and going back and forth and deadening. And the current project budget is $18 million. So it's a big project. We also approved the Fuel Equipment and Management System at Joe Lloyd Way, which is where we're putting along the little buses that are actually contracted out. They're not MST drivers, but it's a subcontract. And so we approved the equipment for, which is a fuel equipment there. We also approved a three-year agreement with REMIX, which is a three-year subscription agreement, contracted in the amount of $110,000 for transit planning, web-based platforms for agency planning and other departments. It actually, those were the, it's all on the computer, so it's web-based and it tells you how to make new routes. Authors, we offer, as we do, a web of credit, $2 million. And we've had to do this every year because sometimes the FDA doesn't give us our money by the way. We see, you know, there's different reasons we don't get it, so we have to float or vote for a while. I'm not sure if we've ever used it before, but we probably need to have it there just in case so we can make payroll. We approved Security Foot Mobile Control Services. It's a $486,000 contract for a three-year agreement. And it's necessary to do that, it's mandatory to do it, even to a safety board. You know, especially have this, we have this transit site and stuff like that. We have that full-time officers there. And of course, we always have the place of our district general managers, excellent award, excellence award. We recognize Neil Snatch, she's been there for a long time, and that's it.
I caught that as well, so my report isn't quite as robust as they could be. And I also didn't have a TMC meeting since the last meeting. I was in Latau, which was before the last council meeting for me, I would go to Latau. There was no watering, there was only showwater for me and Ida. But I did attend the Finance Committee to review the new year's figures, the Finance Committee here. And of course, attended all of the Mayor's Advisory Committees, February 18, Sustainable Delaware York, we were talking about the butterfly garden, February 17, the New Committee on the Airport. Small, if anyone's interested in kind of track the history of the airport and ways we might be able to help address concerns, work with concerns. We also had a new committee on emergency preparedness. And so Chris Worklin was there, which was very helpful. And with the people running NICSOL for communication, so if you want to hear any and everything about the city, that will be coming out shortly. I unfortunately missed the Parks and Culture and the Butterfly Garden workshop this weekend, because I was in bed. Also had our regular ones on the line, nice group of folks talking about all kinds of things. February 7, I had a conversation with San Francisco Airport Noise Improvement Manager, talking about how SFO deals with, how they interact with neighboring cities, how they deal with sound issues and testing and things like that, it was very fascinating. We'll be forward to some more information from them. On February 11th, I met with Councilwoman Tal and Community Human Services about the seaside homeless shelter for women and families. It's a pretty amazing project that they're leading, and hopefully will be able to support them. February 12th, I went to the Regional Parks District Meeting at the Bus Lot. It was really nice to come into our neighborhood to a nicely packed room with all kinds of votes that are, of course, very invested in the Broad Pond and the future, anything that touches it is done well. What I walked away from that with is the knowledge that this first set of funding that we have goes from Freeway and Safeway down to, and it only touches the Broad Pond. It's the underpass, and it could be a loop-de-loop. It's the underpass and it could be a loop. Yeah, switchback, thank you. That'll take us up to Carlton. So it is not going to go through the front pond for several years. So that was good to hear. And then on the 18th, I went to CPSC hearing about town water rate increases, very interesting. With a packed group of folks, I was very passionate. I want to shift my reports to more about upcoming. I want you to understand what I'm kind of walking into rather than what I've done. And so first of all, it's Tuesday, the 3rd, vote. Right, there's a box out here that you can drop your ballot into in town that day, but please go to Old Town Hall and vote. We will all be here in this room doing strategic planning where we prioritize the focus for the next six months. So I encourage you to come see how that process works, how decisions on your behalf are made. If you have some questions that you would like to be brought up, please let me know and I'll make sure that I include them. February 5 through the 8th, excuse me, I'll be going to U.S.A. for our policy makers conference. Being presented by the local government commission, focuses on building livable communities. It'll be interesting to see, I'm gonna come back for that. Then the thing I'd like to remind everyone is the butterfly garden opening on Saturday, March 14, 9 to 11 a.m. There will be educational exhibits by Sustainable Delray Oaks, saved whales, water, usual stormwater management, interactive activities. And this project in particular has had a lot of different players involved. So it's really a nice testament to how the communities come together and help like for butterflies and also for the health of our waters and ourselves, so please come. And that's it for me. I will not be able to go until January for March because of the other events coming up. Always there will be emails, phone, or a cup of tea if you want. On that, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Again, the consent is usually just administrative items, but if anyone would like to pull anything to discuss, now we can each vote. Vote, is there any public, anyone want to vote? All in favor, I vote. Pass to Ms. Smith. Bold business, we have done, and we're on to new business. And the first thing is discussing the four-word rec trail and agreement. That's your agreement and supplemental agreement.
Thank you. So the intended before you is the information item only, receiver report on the status of Fort Tag, in particular the master agreement and the supplemental agreement. We have Stephanie Castillo and Rich Deal here from Tamsi. Thank you both. Both involved on the Fort Tag project, and Stephanie, okay.
Thank you. So today we are gonna provide some information on the final environmental report, the master agreement and the funding timeline. So Tamsi, as the lead agency under CEQA, released a draft EIR for public comment on November 7, 2019, and the public comment came in on January 3, 2020. So we've been working with our consultants to draft responses to comments and any edits that will be made to the draft EIR. And we have that scheduled to be released on March 13. And March 25 is a key date. That is when we will bring the final EIR to the Tamsi water directors to certify it and also to adopt findings on the mitigation measures as well as the preferred project alternative. We will also approve a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and that is to make sure that we enforce the mitigation measures. And then the last action will be to approve a master agreement, which officially approves the proposed project. So the next steps for Delray Oaks after the Tamsi board certifies the final EIR and also all the other responsible agencies is to adopt findings based on all the information in the certified EIR and also approve a mitigation monitoring reporting program. And this is all with regards to those portions of the project within the city and approve the master agreement. So a little bit on the master agreement as the lead agency. The master agreement commits transportation agency to collaborate with all the underlying jurisdictions so that we can go after funding for design and construction. So the project is proposed as 28 miles. So it's a big project. The design and construction will be phased, and this is all going to be dependent on, once we get money. For the responsible agencies, it's the same thing. The agreement commits them to collaborate with Tamsi to pursue a funding. And it approves the proposed project, but it does not commit any jurisdiction to a given segment. That will be done through supplemental agreements once the funding is secure. And I'll get more into the detail of the funding that we do have secure. But after the execution of the master agreement, Tamsi will request and allocate, request money from the California Transportation Commission. And this is very key. We need to request that money by April 27 of 2020 or we risk losing the money from the state brand. So that's why March 25 is a key date. Following the receiving those ATP funds, we would engage the park, the regional park district and the city of Delray Oaks in design workshops. And this is gonna be from this year all throughout 2021. And that is gonna lead us to 100% design, so we complete all the design for segment one. Yes, public outreach, so we could do workshops and community walks, that sort of thing. And we'll talk about materials, what, so really getting to the gritty, gritty design details. And again, segment one, it goes from Safeway over to Delray Oaks Elementary. So the city of Seaside and residents will also be involved in this process. Once we complete the design following an extensive public outreach, we, Tamsi, Park District, City of Delray Oaks and City of Seaside will approve the design. And then we would enter into a supplemental agreement for segment one for construction. And at that point, we are looking at December 2021 to go to the California Transportation Commission to request that construction money. And then from then, we will build segment one. So I know that was really quick, but I available for questions, and so is Rich.
I can truly back to place. I just want to thank all of you who are involved in this project. I am super excited. I run many miles every week in Delray Oaks and I'm excited to have a place that's safe to run. And I'm excited about being able to just go places on this trail. And I think regionally, we have to think about this as not just a project that's gonna happen in Delray Oaks, but clearly there's lots of partners and there's benefits to many people across the peninsula. So I just want to say, go Fort Tag, I'm very excited. Thank you.
Karen Harris, Rosier Road and Sustainable Delray Oaks. And I'd like to talk in support of the Fort Tag trail concept because I feel that it's a really good amenity or a project for the city to help meet its general plan requirements. And I envision for our city by connecting all of our communities in a safe way with trails that are accessible and provide and protect the open spaces. So I think that that project is, I think there's a lot of that. And connecting our communities is really important too. And I believe that having these recreational trails even near our homes adds an economic benefit and increases the value of the home. And I've seen that where my parents live within the community, retirement community up in Lincoln, where it's desirable to have a rec trail near your home where you don't have to drive to go on the trail. Like my husband and I used to put the bicycles in the back of the truck and we'd have to drive to the rec trail to get there. Now we wouldn't have to do that. And we would have to drive up to the top of Four Ohr just to see the meteor showers or the huge moon rises up there, you know, because that's a really good vent. But well, now we would be able to just ride our bikes or just walk there safely. And I think this is a great opportunity for the city to take advantage of the funding to also the transportation issues. We have a lot of problems with this area right here, this intersection on Carlton and 218. So that would be improved as well as the area near the Safeway where it's just disaster. I mean, this just camps a lot of times. People going and coming into the car wash. So this would be providing a lot of funds and I'd hate for us to miss out on this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, we're going to move on to the receiver report on the midyear budget review for February 18, 2020. And consider on the middle of that day, like we put budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, before you receive a midyear budget review report and approve midyear budget amendment appropriating an additional $87,950 for this fiscal year and approving a change to the position of role is taking one patrol officer position and making it sergeant so that we have, we go from having two sergeants to three sergeants and six officers to five. So to present the budget review, Roberto's not able to be with us tonight. Roberto Moreno is our finance consultant and he does a lot of heavy lifting on these reports. And I just want to thank you, even though he's not here with his mother. Finished with that, Kim pulled a real heavy sled on this all year long and particularly during this time of the year and entering budget season, which is coming up in about three months. And so I want to thank Kim as well as Karen, who works on this. I also want to thank Finance Committee, Mayor Kerr, Councilmember Getzel, and Dennis Allen, who volunteers his time as a resident and clearly a ton of past planning commission and council time, so he brings a wealth of experience. While I'm mentioning Dennis, I just want to point out that he had health mishap whilst being here last week, late last week. It was a terrible thing. Our staff, he is healthy, he's at home and doing amazingly well. So I'm grateful with him and Teresa for his few years of service. Throwing right into the midyear budget review, I'd like to cover the general fund budget summary on the front page of the staff report, those of you that have it. So as you know, on July 1, we approved a budget of $4,809,100 in revenues against expenditure appropriation of $4,444,510 for an anticipated surplus at the end of the fiscal year of $364,590. What happened between the time that budget was approved and the time that we started this midyear budget review was we learned, we learned a few important things. We learned that we had moved a little quickly at the staff level and at my level. And we overlooked some things that we caught during the midyear budget review and brought to the attention of the Finance Committee, and now I want to bring to the attention of the public and full disclosure of how we're managing the budget. Those items included a $210,000 for loan payment, which council had authorized in the previous fiscal year, not being paid in the last fiscal year because of the time it took for it to actually set up the billing and actually billing us and then having us pay. So that $210,000 disbursement was paid in this fiscal year. That wasn't in our budget. It did not show up in this budget. And so we caught it at midyear, and that's a $210,000 decrease that will reflect in the numbers I'm briefing. In addition to that, we caught another error we made. That was that on the revenue side of the budget, we accounted for the full four caretaker grant that we get in. On the expense side of the budget, we did not. So we only accounted for about half of that grant funding. The impact on our midyear budget numbers is that you only get that money if you spend it. So it's a one-for-one dollar, spent reimbursed. So that was an $89,500 additional deficit in our budget numbers at midyear. Additionally, council approved $50,000 for Southbound Sewer Line Design and $20,000 for a HR contract. For a total, when you sum all of those numbers I just went over, it's $450,400. I'm sorry, plus the solar panels, the council appropriated $80,000 for. That sums to $450,000. So what that did is it took our appropriations number from $4,444,000 to $4,894,000 before we even got to this discussion about what we're asking for for midyear. And that took us from a projected surplus of $364,000 to a deficit of $85,000 at midyear. So I just want to track that. That's, we unearthed that and got our books straight during the midyear budget review process. Now we're gonna segue to midyear budget. For the midyear budget, we did a detailed review of revenues and expenditures and projected out towards the end of the fiscal year. And what we have is an anticipated revenue increase of $350,000 through the end of the fiscal year. The basic components of that revenue increase are a significant decrease in our cannabis business tax revenue of about $125,000. That's due to increased competition. It's due to the vaping impact on sales. And it's due to changes at the state level in their regulatory framework that has really, really played havoc with supply chains. And just getting to market material that can be sold, at least in the legal department, which is where we are. That $125,000 cannabis tax decrease was added to by a caretaker grant increase, or decrease rather, as well as a decrease in rental income of about $4,000. We had increases in revenues in many areas, which was a positive sign. Surprisingly to all of us, as this is our first real year under our short-term rental organs, our TOT, our transient occupancy tax revenue is coming in much stronger than we had anticipated and projected. And so that represents an increase as well as as well as increases in building permits and other license fees. The overall impact of all of that on the revenue side is next to about a $350 increase. The overall impact of all of that on the revenue side is a net to about a $350 increase. So it's a wash. On the expense side, we have the following appropriation changes. We have an $87,700 net decrease in police and public works operations costs, $4,000 net decrease in bank service charges. Those decreases in savings are offset by an $80,000 increase in planning services, $50,000 increase in legal services, and a $50,000 increase in project management. The planning services in the staff report, it says due to fund the housing element. It's bigger than that, it's broader than that. Planning services appropriation will fund not only housing element, but ordinance updates and ordinance production in the area of ADUs, zoning updates and other ordinance, ordinances that are required to keep us moving forward through compliance for state mandates under the housing element. The legal fees and project management, the legal fees are associated with the housing element and ordinances as well as review of many agreements that we have in the pipeline regarding to forest dissolution, whether they are hot water agreement with Monterey Marina Coast Water District, with Seaside County San Station District for sewers, Habitat Conservation Plan, JPA, and the like. So Alex's workload has been increased over the next six months and appropriation helps to offset that. And then finally, the project management, we had asked council for $150,000 appropriation for that line item, the contract at the last council meeting. We had done that under the assumption that we had a different set of numbers in mind. Once we realized what we actually had after good spay work at mid-year budget, we pushed that number down to 50. There is not an extra $100,000 appropriation that staff has to play with in the slush fund. That is not happening. We compressed that $150,000 appropriation down to $50,000 to get us through the end of the fiscal year and minimize the impact on our uncertainty fund and on our budget. So what that results in is a request by staff for appropriation at mid-year of $87,950. And then finally, the position control list change relates to supervisory staff in the Police Department. At Chief Point's request, we analyzed the impact of increasing the number of sergeants we have from two to three and decreasing the number of patrol officers we have by one to offset that. So same number of officers in the department or one more supervisor. We determined that the cost for this year is zero for the remainder of this fiscal year based on salary savings that we have reaped over the year. And the out-year impact for next fiscal year is approximately $2,000. And that represents frankly the compassion of our hate of, that's how tight we are. And so staff's request is to approve the position control list change, authorizing three sergeants and reducing the officers by one. Finally, I just want to go over our sort of overall fiscal status based on all of the, you know, throughout a lot of numbers there. And what I want to leave you with, both on the council and the public, is that the projected economic uncertainty reserve at the end of this fiscal year in four months' time is We have a fairly high degree of confidence in that based on the fact that we're only four months out, we've done a good rigor scrub, and we have actual numbers, actuals through the end of calendar year. That represents 34% of our general fund as the reserve. And I can say with pretty high degree of confidence, no city on the peninsula and perhaps no city in the county has a side of economic uncertainty reserve. So that's terrific leadership by the council and great work by the staff to watch our dollars and get us there. That may sound, it does sound, and it is, saying that we are actually at the moment somewhat cash-rich. It might not lead us to the conclusion that we are out of the woods financially. We continue to carry a $1.2 million interest-bearing debt, and we continue to, I continue to have great concern about the stability of our cannabis revenues. So as good as it is, you know, good stewardship going forward is critical. The passage of our tax measure in March is vital to the long-term stability of the city. In addition to the economic uncertainty reserve pension trust that council opened has $300,000 in, or a sum of total between the economic uncertainty pension trust of nearly $2 million. That entire $2 million is in interest, which is a refreshing change from where we've been, which is paying interest on this bond debt. That concludes my presentation. So before I begin to question the staff recommendation again, is to receive a report and then you consider approval of mid-year budget amendment, appropriate an additional $87,950 and changes to the position control list.
I have one question. Pardon me, was, I'm sorry. Pardon me, you're so honest that you were admitting, I think, stuff that, you know, this all was obviously kind of washed out. What I couldn't follow, actually, was the payment on the pollution fund of Fora. If it didn't come out of, if we actually didn't expense it in last year, we should, that should all just kind of wash itself out. Is that, it's not really showing up like that. It's showing up as an expense, as a, that's not an expense issue.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's showing up as an expense in this fiscal year on the budget because it didn't show as an expense in last year's budget. It carried over, it carried over as part of our ending fund balance, which gave us an inflated ending fund balance, which is great. But it didn't show in this year's budget as an expense.
This year's budget not.
It didn't until, until '17.
All right, okay. All right. It's only a wash.
It is a wash. It is, the reason it's important for me to make this point to you and the public is, look, we're in the business of maintaining the public trust. And so when I, quite honestly, at the time, said, you know, please appropriate $50,000 for sewer design or at least appropriate $20,000 for HR, and I said it will come out of the ending fund balance, I thought there was going to be an ending fund balance for it coming. And based on our accounting, there was no ending fund balance. Now, our, it kept your point. I mean, the money was there. It, right, it is, you know, way semantic, but it's frankly just important to me to make it.
And I appreciate that. That's kind of fine, I appreciate you, you know, your strength of appearance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, and you and Karen and Gerber for all of any listening and explaining stuff to those of us on the budget review. Huh? And thank you for the electric committee voting so hard. We appreciate it all.
Any comments?
Good evening, Doug Burton, I live upon Paloma. One question, Mr. Pick. That, to me, added up to about a 10% mistake over the fiscal years, and you will have to bear with me on the numbers, but it's about, I counted about $440,000 difference over a approximately $4.4 million budget, $4.8 million. 10%. My only question is, how can we make sure that this never, ever happens again? It's not as insignificant to me as it, as I think some of us might think.
Thank you. Not insignificant to me at all. And I appreciate the questions. It's an absolutely good question. And we've talked quite a bit about that. And it's, as you might guess, there are new which measures we're putting in place to ensure it never happens again. Part of it is ensuring that we do a clean transfer from fiscal year to fiscal year. Our closeout procedures haven't been what they need to be, and so we're tightening that up. The other bit is ensuring that we, essentially, that we look at every dollar in grant funding very carefully so that we have a one-for-one offset. That was a very, in hindsight, it's a simple mistake. An application, it added up, so we put that into place. And we also frankly moved staff control of the budget from our consultant, who does a great job, by the way, he's fantastic, but he's a consultant, he's here part-time, and he's part-time. This came back, this is now only in the domain of full-time employees of the budget, and so we will be tracking it much more closely. Part of what caused the shift away from full-time employees was the software change. We went to MIT, we went to this sort of fund-based accounting software, which cities hundreds of times our size use with department staff like many, many finance people. And so our dependency on the accountant, on the consultant grew because of that software changeover. We are firmly, my confidence in our ability to now handle that accounting is much higher, and we pulled that back in house. So it's a great question. It's not, none of this is trivial to me, and I appreciate the question.
Ken, rather than being verdy, I guess I'm not real good with numbers, that's why I went to law school, but the 1.2 debt, I don't see that reflected on the budget, and I'm just curious what the service cost of that is to the citizens every month, every year, and why it's not included.
Ken, that's a great question. So I encourage you all to read our annual audits. Our annual audits contain information that is not included in our annual budgets. And that debt is, which is not included in our annual budget, is included in our annual audit as a liability. Impact, its impact on the residents, on the city, is that, correct me if I'm wrong here, $700,000 of that 1.2 million is accruing 5% interest. The $500,000 which is not has to be paid off. So we have to pay $500,000 of non-interest-bearing debt before we start to bite into the $700,000 interest-bearing, and pencil that out, it's roughly $35,000 a year in interest to the city. And again, all that's reflected in our annual audits, it's online, available on CDOs.
Okay, I guess maybe I would just expect that to also be included in the debt service, at least that 5% portion that's drawing interest accrued, but maybe not yet. But it would be good for us to know that that is still accruing as citizens, that's a debt that we have, and we'd like to see it included in the budget.
Sorry, pardon me. So when we do the annual audit briefing before council, which we did in November, we generally do it in the spring, that's the time we do a deep dive into all of those liabilities. So it is, just so, just to be clear, it is presented to, in a public forum, as part of our annual audit, as our liabilities, but I think.
And I'm just curious whether there are other such debts the city might have in addition to this 1.2 that, you know, unless we go back and look at that audit, we may not be aware of, because I would sort of expect it in the budget. So if there are any of those similar debts, like the 1.2 million lawsuit settlement, it'd be nice to know. In looking at the legal increase by $50,000, does that entail some of the expected costs for the landwatch lawsuit? And if so, does it also anticipate other litigation that might go on this fiscal year with respect to the proposed changes in the housing elements and some of those zones, changes that may or may not occur there?
Yes.
It does include, does it include any other anticipated litigation with the $50,000?
It includes what we know and what we reasonably expect, which is landwatch.
So I guess my point would be that there was some indication at the time, to be able to avoid that $50,000 landwatch lawsuit, that they told us they were going to find, we could have just modified, made some of the modifications to our housing element to avoid that $50,000, just 1.2 million.
Ken, it's not a $50,000 lawsuit. So don't confuse what we're asking for in the budget line item with the potential cost of that litigation.
I understand. And what I'm saying is, we could have avoided any additional cost by making some of those modifications and just slowing down, I think, like you admitted, rather than thinking that landwatch is a bully and just pay attention to what they were saying and requesting. I hope it was another reasonable request on their part. So the $50,000 may be less or it may be more, depending on what happens with respect to that litigation. With respect to the project management, I understand now that that's been reduced from $150,000 that was requested and approved last time to $50,000, is that right? This time? And I know that, again, there was a request to slow down, to wait until after this budget review before approving that. There was a presentation indicating that there was an urgency for that $150,000. And this council approved that because of the urgency that we were told, this council and the public were told, existed. And now we're saying we can get by with $50,000. How many other things have we been told require $150,000? Could have only been done with $50 or less. And that's it. I appreciate the work that all of you do, you know, staff and council do. All that sounds negative, it's just some of those things that I noticed on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And just in response to the point about the project management, the urgency existed and it doesn't exist. And I deeply appreciate council's approval of that contract at the time rather than waiting. We've already embarked on work with RGS in that regard, which we couldn't have done had the contract not been. So it was very much appreciated that the council moved that schedule.
Rebecca Jones Hill will place. I have three questions. On page three of the check voucher registration, let's go to the bottom, page two. It has check number one.
Are you in consent agenda?
Show us what you're looking at. At the check voucher registration claims report.
That's in consent agenda. That's already been talked.
Is this something you can move here?
No, she's in consent agenda. Yeah.
I'm happy to talk with you after the council meeting.
Just, just real quick, I saw that there was a check number, and it was for you for the $256.95, but then I saw it on page three with no check number but for the same amount. So I was wondering, did that get deducted twice? So I'll just leave it at that. Okay. That was just my question on that. The other question that I had was as far as the Doryoets Police Department budget, where you increased from two sergeants to a third sergeant, and yes, you, we will call it through attrition, you have one less officer. Is there something in our, in our policies or in our ordinances that says that we have to have a ratio of one to two, one supervisor for two police officers per shift? Because it just seems like we're kind of top-heavy, we have a chief and Chris is the commander, we have a commander, and then we have now three sergeants, we have six officers. It just seems like we're kind of top-heavy. So I was just asking, as far as, is that to maintain the officers so they'll stay? So we're bumping up somebody up to a sergeant status? Or, because when I read in the past as far as the FERS expense and the staffing for law enforcement and San City's having, other law enforcement agencies are having, and I'm thinking, okay, why are we going so top-heavy having that much command and only six officers?
So this is a big gap. So this is a big guy, he's going to answer the question.
Thank you.
First, I'll answer the PERS issue and the salary issue financially. We have one of the highest ratio of pepper police employees of all departments on the peninsula. That means our retirement costs per officer and per position are lower than just about anybody around here, because of the recruiting that we've done the last several years when we combined our police departments. We also have a much lower retirement rate per year, as opposed to a 3.0 for classic or a 2.7 for most pepper, we're at 2%. So our increase in retirement cost is actually very, very low. The main reason that we want another sergeant is, the number one factor for underperformance or misconduct in law enforcement agencies is lack of supervision. Since we run operations 24 hours a day, I feel, and it's been my philosophy since I've been here, that we should have a supervisor for every shift. So we only have two command officers, that's myself and the commander. The commander does double duty as a shift supervisor, so we're getting value on that because he supervises the shift. But then every other shift that we have, 24 hours a day, if something happens, a large-scale event, an incident with an officer, we have someone who is accountable to me to make sure that we're doing things right. Instead of maybe an acting supervisor, or maybe two equally ranked officers, somebody needs to be able to take command of incidents, somebody needs to be held accountable for those incidents. So the number one, if, when you look at LAPD ramparts, all these base handles nationwide, is lack of first-level supervision. So putting somebody into a sergeant's position, what it allows me to do is send them to advanced training, send them to supervisor courses through California post, give them additional leadership training, to make sure that we get the very best supervision of law enforcement on the peninsula. And that's why we did that.
Thank you. My next question is, when you said with RGS that there was a 50,000, you suppressed it to $50,000 for this fiscal year, correct?
This is this fiscal year.
Okay. So what happens when they are working more and the billing goes higher than the budget of $50,000? That's question one. And then the question two is then, so it's anticipated, the $100,000 balance will be paid in the next fiscal year, correct?
There is no $100,000.
So it's a flat $50,000 contract, no other payments?
Correct.
And once they exceed the billing hours for that $50,000, the contract stops?
Correct.
Okay. I guess that's what was kind of unclear. Thank you.
Okay, the math teacher needs to ask. I was just looking here. Okay, when I see a 1,900% increase in something, I get really curious. I'd be, okay, so it's in the earned interest.
Was that TIP?
It's in the, no, it's the interest earned under the other for revenue. And it's, I don't know, maybe it's got to do with your reserve fund and your purse fund, maybe you had low-walled that at the beginning of the year, you headed for $900, and then it, actual, right mid-year, was it 17,000, a little bit over 17,000? And you're projecting it to 30,000, I'm like, that's a $3,000% increase.
Right. And here, this is, that's purely a function of us not being used yet.
Okay, that's what I thought, when you were talking, I was like, I bet that's what, I'm like, okay, I gotta ask, because 3,000% increases? I can't even teach my kids that, because they don't even make sense to them. Okay, okay, well, I was just curious. The interest on the 700,000, is that compound?
Is it?
Right? Okay, so it might be 35 this year, it's 37 next year, I've been doing the math, it's 31, and it's, 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 yeah, it's growing fast.
We've been discussions with the finance committee and internal staff, I mean, we could be very cash poor, but debt-free.
Yeah.
Right now. And we may have stood not to do that.
Okay. I just want to make sure, it's, I thought that 35 kind of sticks in everyone's head, but it's not 35, it's growing every year. Yeah, yeah. And the last thing is just a comment, I know we've talked about the RGS, you need it. I just want to make the observation, though, again, that in retrospect, the mayor was cautioning the last council meeting about maybe waiting until we get the midyear review, and I think in light of everything that's happened, maybe next time, we might consider listening to that. It turned out to be pretty good advice to not be making a bunch of big decisions until we got that review done. And it functioned as it was supposed to, we found the mistakes, but, you know, Doug pointed out, fairly serious mistakes, and it's good we caught them. But just something to keep in mind, next time, if someone's urging caution, maybe we want to listen to them instead of just running over it.
Yeah, again, the point I made to that comment, which is really relevant, I appreciate you making it, is the urgency of getting that contract signed and underway existed?
I understand, I understand. It didn't, we didn't need the whole 100, you could have, if, to do what you did between last month and next month, we could have done something much smaller to get us through the month until the midyear review was done, and then we could have come back.
That's not, that's not the point that was made.
Okay.
To have waited would have cost us weeks of, at this point, really important time, and I just wanted to kind of bring Fora back into this. We have 120 days left in Fora's business. 120 days? And we have enormous, and so, you know, the, I said 2020, and had a proposal then, at the time made, which it wasn't, that we approved the contract that night for a lower amount. That could have got us started. But the fact that we got the contract approved, again, I appreciate the council did to get us underway.
Well, no, and I agree, getting it started was good. I'm just, and I'm not saying anything bad, I'm just saying, in hindsight, that wasn't, that was worn out, that, yeah, there's a good reason to wait, maybe be cautious, take small steps, wait until you get all the facts in. You know, it's all worked out, it's all worked out. Just something to remember for next time. Thank you.
Counsel? I was just wondering if the, during the election, and the tax extension is not approved, how is that going to affect us?
Great question. Thank you. So. So Karen, the answer to that is that the tax doesn't sunset for about 18 months, I recall. And in that time, we will be, we will be working to identify new revenue streams, which are not easily found in the near term. Real revenue for this city is much longer-term development and generation of revenue. And so unless, unless the city council chose to put another tax measure on the balcony and run it, we'd be looking at $600,000 a year in service cuts, which would be better. Great question.
Any other questions? Okay.
Just one comment. I know there's some question about police officers and police supervisors and six, being military, you know, the standards is one supervisor, two soldiers. Secondly, just remember that, yes, we have three shifts a day, but we need more people because people take vacations, people get sick. So when you do math on how many people you need to staff for one position for 24 hours, it's no more than four people, you know, you only have three shifts. Because that one shift is, somebody's on vacation, somebody's in training, somebody's...
All right, I just want to say, I think I'm probably the most fiscally conservative up here, very cautious, and, you know, the Dow has dropped 1,900 points, and that's the last, we've got ourselves in this trouble. I want to take advantage of these mistakes to figure out how we make our processes stronger, you know? And I would like to see what other financial policies that you can offer. I would like to see how we keep this from happening again. And obviously, you know, we've got new software last year, and there's a new transition, and there's always something. But, you know, I think policies are important for exactly this situation. On that, any other comments?
So, I'm moving, is that recommendation?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Jim Clark, Doritos. While I've been listening to this, I think it's very important that there is some perspective how far we've come. It's appeared to me that there has been an immense amount of pouncing on the little ants that are moving along in this budget without any previous knowledge of the alligators that were there 15 years ago. And so I would personally appreciate it. I know Councilmember Clark is, I think, the only one that's been on the council through that whole process. If she happens to remember how bad a shape the city was in, say, a dozen years ago or eight years ago, and compare that to where we are today, I think it would provide a tremendous perspective for those that may not have been through this process as we have over the number of years, so that we have a better appreciation of how really good we have it now in comparison to where we are. And it might make everybody realize how infinitesimal the things are we are talking about in comparison to where we were years ago.
I'd like to make a motion to receive the midyear budget review and approve the midyear budget amendment, both integrating additionally $600,000 and changing the controls.
I second.
I.
All right, we have to, we get a record?
Not the only record.
Yes. Okay, well, we'd love to, who I didn't see, consider contract work with Blacktop Street Slurry Project, this is the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The action before council is to approve the award of a street slurry seal contract that Bond Blacktop, in the amount of $113,240. Authorize the city manager to sign the contract, authorize the city manager to spend up to 15% in unconditional unperceived contingencies for an amount of $17,000. An estimated city engineer's project administration cost of approximately $5,000. An estimated cost of appropriation work to retrieve recent patch cracks and potholes of approximately $10,000 for a total appropriation authorization for this action of $145,240. The terrific news that we continue to get on our street projects, based partly on the time of year we go out to bid, which is the dead of winter, right after the holidays, when companies are looking for work, is we continue to get really good competitive bids. Our city engineer, Sherman Lowe, working with Mont Gucci and the team, put together the bid documents. We've got four solid firms bid on it. Bond Blacktop is the low bid at $113. The city engineer's estimate for this slurry seal project is $176,000. Total appropriation by council for the project is $200,000. So it's terrific news. The last two years, we've had similar low bids, we've come in under budget for both projects and on time, and we hope to continue that this year as well. I want to mention something that is not going to be considered for approval tonight, but is important to understand in context so that there's not a reception of double dipping or two bites at the apple. Our city engineer, after we got these low bids, the city engineer went out and re-looked parts of Portola, particularly down by the dispensary and Fremont, where the streets in pretty bad shape down there. And where we were going to apply a very inexpensive, relatively inexpensive treatment for that portion of the street, based on the low bid on the slurry, we decided to do it right. And that is to do what we did on cul-de-sacs along Portola, tear up the street, and put in a new one down to about three or four inches of new street. That, that cost, we also, by the way, while we were down there just recently, found a storm grid that we had no existed, under ice plant and dirt. So city engineer also estimated that recovery into the estimate, and revised his cost estimate from $10,000 in the line item that we're asking for for the pre-work to $24,000. That $24,000 contract amount is going to come back before council at a future date, either at a special meeting or at, or at March's meeting. But I want, I wanted to be clear to everybody, we are approving $10,000 tonight, we're going to be coming back to council and saying, we'd like to increase that $10,000 appropriation to 24, here's the contract for the work, and we want to do more thorough and more enduring repairs to that portion of Portola down by, down by Fremont. So that's, that, again, we'll do that at a later time. So the request tonight, again, to council is to, is to approve the contract for $113,240, $113,240 with Bond Blacktop, and authorize total appropriation of $145,000, $145,240. Any other questions? The, so the additional, like you said, the additional $10,000, and then you're, and then we're going to come back for, is it additional 24, or is it additional 14?
Say additional 14.
Yeah.
And we have a separate contract where we carry on a section of the road.
Because exceeds, it requires a contract. No question?
All right, I'm going, I just have one question. And it happened again when we did the cul-de-sac, everything was perfect, but no longer than two weeks later, Daley came, marked up the streets, another month later, we dug them up again, and it happened not just at our street, it happened frequently. And I was wondering how, and could that be avoided?
It's a great question.
That's my question.
It's a great question. And the, and the answer is, we do our best to anticipate other work that needs to be done in the street, so that it doesn't cut through our brand-new streets. And as, experienced as Monterey for a couple of years, and now here for three, in spite of all our best efforts, it never fails that either it's part of the compaction process of the new street, a water main breaks, and you've got to cut into it and repair it, or a private sewer lateral from a resident that didn't even know to ask who's going to do their sewer lateral work, schedules it for right after our streets paved, and we get cut in. Some, one thing that we have, one tool that we have at our disposal that we try to use is that if it's a, if it's an egregious cut into a brand-new street, we sometimes have the utility company slurry a larger area rather than just attach the cutting into, and that's a way to cosmetically restore the street. It's a great question.
Quick question, with the, I do this again, Karen, grid and the street. Okay. Over the last, the last couple of years, the speeding stuff's come up, you know, there's , I mean, one of the things we talked about is the strapping. Is there any chance, or any talking about what we're doing this, to put the strapping down in Portola and Flendale, especially, I think especially Portola, because in terms of lighting, there, I didn't know if that's something we looked at. I know it's come up for several times over the years in the sketch, so just curious.
Yeah, Karen, it's not, it's not part of the big specs on this project. Frankly, need to tap into some in-track engineering expertise, whether it be Rich Deo or Cam C. or otherwise, to give us sort of a, their review on what it might do and what it might cost, and then make a, maybe, and make a council decision. That's Karen.
I make a motion that we approve the contract on, in that sum of $113,240 and total expenditure of $145,000. of $145,240 for the street, so the slurry project.
All right. The last thing, this is discuss city council agenda management. This was put on the agenda by Councilwoman Lynn Powell and Gaglotti, so.
Thank you. I'm glad we're having this open discussion because there was an inappropriate discussion which resulted in the violation of the Brown Act by our mayor. Again, I hope that none of this matter brought up in open session in order to curate the violation by discussing the item in public.
The reason we brought this up is, yeah, I think that this was a mistake. I think that it was, it could have been avoided. It's one of the first topics that we talk about in the admin training, and if you attended that, you know, this would not have happened. Setting that aside, the content of the email was asking about how do we want to agendize items, or I'm sorry, no, it was how to give our reports. And in the email, I responded, "I think we should leave it just the way it is. I think that it's one of the few opportunities that we can speak outside the ground or underneath the Brown Act and as an entire council and share with the residents what we've been doing." I think that much of the job of this happens, not just in these chambers, it happens in all these regional boards, and this is our opportunity to kind of innovate that. So, I'll say it now in public, what I responded in the email to you was, "I think we should just leave it just the way it is."
My feeling is that sometimes we get too in the middle when we do our own, and I think that having a written report included in the agenda package, consent agenda, that says, you know, we put much more detail perhaps concerning what they appropriated and what they expended, and still doing a oral report on things that impact our citizens, maybe towards things that city immediately or opportunities. For example, when I go to the AMBAG and we talk about grant opportunities, I guess that's something that I think should be discussed in the open, but going to AMBAG and saying that they, and I did an AMBAG package, it's about 196 pages, and it's, they're low study or the budget. Significant parts of that budget does not need to be discussed, but we live in the hour in the packet, including that consent agenda, and then just leave the highlights or the agenda.
I guess I'll tie in a little bit here. I think we're all representatives of the board that we sit on, and by the time I was put on this council, there was always a brief discussion, a brief highlight of what went on in our meetings. I think we put in all the 194 pages, and my 194 pages, they're 90.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying 30 minutes or agenda impact. I'm just saying, you know, the highlights that we gather from either agenda, the total package, or our attendance. Little things, we approved an audit, like I reported tonight, it was not a court document, that really is not something of great interest here, but this is one form. I mean, that's 30 minutes, I could have saved, everybody's time, and just said, "Hey, you know, the building from that runway and the drawn applications went well, which were applications that we catch up." But I think a mix of them to be a way to satisfy everybody. If they want more information about something that we've been looking, where it's important is, I think, where what we do, the information we gather at, once ever at, at acting to deal with the concept boards that have community impact on the businesses, including a budget and quite honestly, including these budgets, you know, all this money that they're spending has its kind of negative impact in the act of no exact.
I just like, with MST, we're given the MST highlights, and all these highlights used to be in our packets under, again, it was under correspondence years ago, and then they suddenly, you know, through the years, they started getting taken out, or perhaps, you know, each agency, I don't know if you guys get or highlights of what goes on, that we can add the board highlights as the written communication. I don't think we used to do more words of writing that were important to put in the packet, but, you know, I think it's important to give the public information that's them, that's very important. But I don't think we, you know, still have to go to all the details. I'm sure brief reporting, that's what I, that's what I do, and it's kind of changed from this in the past few years, but again, if you can get your agencies to, I assume that everybody, you know, all the council members, all the sheriffs, can use, you know, what the highlights were, and put that in your packet, and then you can all read it along their data.
Just on one point, the reason I'm kind of resistant to having written boards and then also adding to the packet, it's just another thing. It's just that when this packet, when our packet was out, we monitored one for us last time, and we have four meetings every Friday now until next. Right, yeah, and so, and so then, for me to ask and then generate a written report and then submit it in, so in fact, the package is, it would be possible.
I'm opposed to putting it in the packet for two reasons. Not everybody will read the packet, and everybody has been demanding transparency, transparency, that's all I've heard since I've been on the council. So, it would be a mess a lot. There's also many people who look at the video, you know, to find out what's going on in the city. They won't have those, they'll lose them. So, I think that we lose a lot of the transparency, and as I say, that's all I've heard since I've been on this council. And so, I, perhaps, I'm probably guilty of maybe making our reports though they need to be, and I could shorten my reports certainly, but I, other than that, I think our crack process is providing information to all, I mean, I could see it being suggested that all of council shorten their reports, so as you asked for to shorten the meeting, I think that would cover it all.
So, this idea came to when a visitor came to the council chambers, and afterward she said, "Oh, my God, you just don't want that on the reports." And she said, "Why do you do those?" And so, I started digging into them, and I was given incorrect guidance on whether I could make this decision on my own or not. And ultimately, for me, it's sort of about making the meetings shorter. It's about, you know, just tonight, how dense the meetings are and how much is happening. And I look at and I see the majority of people out here work, right? We're fortunate that we only have one meeting a month, and maybe we should look at doing something different, maybe we do two meetings a month, you know, we'll get out of here at nine o'clock tonight, and it's a fairly early evening. So, that's kind of, that was my motivation, to look at how we can, I don't want any more work for anyone, whether we're reporting what we're reporting. And I actually found the various responses very interesting, and I am thrilled that we're having an open conversation about this. So, what I like to do is go out to the public and hear how you feel about the reporting versus oral versus written, things like that.
So, the other thing, if you, I just dropped off on history again, but we always start our goal, and that way, if you want to set time on the meat of your agenda, if people don't want to hear the reports, that could be, that's how we do this.
As I recall, that was actually a request, that was me very recently, bringing the reports to the meeting, or the board meeting, I mean, just within the last.
Requested what?
That to bring those reports to the front of the meeting. It was very recent.
The only question I, it was, makes for the open forum, I think, and that I helped call the request on reports. Ever since I've been on the council, then we're just now.
Actually, we changed it. It wasn't the end, it was the end, and we did change it early on. I think to go out to the public and get your impressions on this.
Mayor, council, usually Tuesday nights, I'm unable to attend the meeting. I'm diving in the aquarium, I'm all wet. It's inconvenient, so I listen to the video, I go through the packet, I've been reading. And a lot of times about listening to the video, it's two and a half hours, and a lot of times, I can't hear what you're saying, you're talking very softly, and the video, I can't hear. I can't see the presentation that's presented up here, so I do go to the packet to read what's in there. So, if the reports were given in there, I would be able to understand it and go through it at my leisure and go back to it, and I think that would be beneficial. I don't know if you want to put it on a consent agenda, but if maybe if there was an issue with maybe the agendizing timeframe, have a verbal update at that time. But if we can increase the volume on the videos, that would really help a lot, and maybe even providing the slideshows by the presenters, because otherwise, we're going to even, nobody's going to get those unless you're an audience.
Hi, I'm Alice Green. I live on Sausalito Avenue, and I remember coming for years to council meetings when the staff reports were in the end. And to tell you the truth, I thought that worked just fine. I would stay and listen to them, and some people wouldn't, they needed to get home. So, I don't see a problem with moving them back.
Yeah, I agree, I think that's a great idea, moving them back. I think there, you could put in place some kind of mechanism if someone had a question, maybe bring up their public comment, but, you know, yeah, put them in. If people need to go, they can go, they will stay around, they can stay around. The one comment I'd say, though, is that, you know, I think the last few years have proved, people are reading what you put in there. Maybe more than you want sometimes, but they're reading it, okay? So, I would argue that more written reports is actually improving transparency, okay? It's there, they can read it, they can pull it out, they can play with it, they can annotate it, they can do something with it, much more than they can on oral report. And so, I would argue that, you know, putting it in writing, submitting it into the record is actually more transparent, and then if you want to talk about it and add to it or whatever at the end, do it. But if people are interested, they'll stick around. And as I said, they're probably, it's not rocket science to come up with some sort of mechanism that if you wanted to pull something up, you could, but most of it, honestly, can just be gotten from people reading it or watching the video later if they really want, if they really want to watch it.
I would just like to say that putting it on the end of the agenda would probably work really well with your constituents. And I will give you the example tonight, while, from Mr. Gagliotti's presentation, even our guest that was doing the foretag, welling asleep in the back, including some of our own constituents, and not really paying attention to what was being presented. And when you lose your constituents, you're only talking to yourself, because it's going on the video, if we can hear it, like it was addressed, but you lost your audience. And so, who is that information going to? And if it's going to the council, then that's something that you can be doing in closed sessions. So, you have residents who really would like to participate, but lengthy meetings, it's just too much. Thank you.
And again, as the old dog that's been here for a lot, a lot of years, there was a reason that they got moved into the middle. And, well, several people will tell you, my memory may not be the best, but I think it had to do with the very same concern of, "What are you guys doing all during the week, and why aren't you being transparent, so we know what's going on and what all these agencies are doing?" So, before you make any decision, I would say, go back in history and see why they got moved up to the middle to begin with, because it had something to do with requests from the audience back then.
Hi, Doug Burton again. I want to say thank you for all of the hard work. I hear it every meeting that I am able to come to, so thank you very much for that. My one small comment is that we're a small town. It's okay to talk about small-town things at a small-town meeting. And hopefully, we won't ever have to have some of the problems that some of the bigger places have. I like the small-town feel, I would keep it. Where you place it in the agenda, it's up to you guys. Thank you.
I have to say, I remember a time when people would just say, "I attended the AMBAG meeting, I attended the mosquito debate with district attorney." Okay, I appreciate all the, oh, I didn't really use drugs or something. I like all the little tidbits that come out in these meetings. I mean, maybe there's a balance about how long it can go on, but I really appreciate the reports.
Yes. I would be opposed to having both the oral reports as well as the written, the written packet. The kind that would kind of satisfy, it would be of transparency to everybody, and it would be available for those who might read it in the packet, who might have heart and body to behold in it. That's one of those things who are in attendance and with the video.
Alice, how would we, how would I actually potentially be able to submit my reports after?
Yeah, it is still difficult at the time. It's definitely hard. The packet would be proved, you'd say, on the table afterwards, or bring in these proof of the afternoon, not that it's a, you know, central, I don't know, it's just more than that.
So, would I be printing these?
Would that?
Would I be printing these? So, I kind of, personal kind of adversity, just printing more paper and using more paper, again, and I agree with a lot of my own. So, could I submit it? My time?
Underwrite if it's, you know, part of the meeting provided, it's the practical. You know, consideration might be that you have the oral reports and the written ones if possible, and the policy, if you have to compel, I mean, where possible, you could. And the policy, if you're not going to have to compel everyone, where possible, you could, and not just trying to affect people.
Perfect. I think that would be basically as is, what we, yeah, but we...
What I'm hearing is a lot of folks were supportive of moving it back.
Yeah.
For your...
We're here to the end.
Believe it or not, you need to quicker they go.
But that also gives people the opportunity to stay if they want to, to read if they want to, to give it on the video, and we can be writing better. So, somebody, I think we're just discussing, right? There's an action, maybe. We can, can we do something?
You can use your motion and just go like that.
I was going to ask one more thing. Oh, so, so, I would like to submit this as my written report.
If you're so lucky, you can have somebody that does have it.
Number four.
So, how do we, okay, so, what I'm hearing is, I move to move the...
I move to move the staff report, mayor, and council board to the, to the end of the agenda.
City manager report.
What do you guys have?
Okay. City manager report and mayor and council report. And what, quote-unus session? It would be the full version. Okay? After, what did you say, not for a session? Not before. And also that, the reports we provided in writing, practical, and the oral. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm getting close. Okay, pass to the members. On that note, we have correspondence from the food bank of Longoria County thanking us for, I don't think we collected $9,000 pounds of food, but we got it in here. So, thank you all for your contributions for those in need. And on that, our next meeting date is Tuesday, March 24th, at 6:10 here. Thank you for coming, and we're...